All right. Good evening and welcome to, we'll take ourselves off. All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time right now is seven P M. Well, I'm going to ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Establishing a quorum, Councilmember Folcher, Kenny Hanford, Davis, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough. Councilmembers Gamble and Fisher are attending remotely.
All right. Thank you very much. Going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That'll be the Pledge of Allegiance and looking for Councilmember Davis. Please lead us.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. There's a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. We do have a sign up sheet. And then if anybody else is interested in speaking, if you're online, please go ahead and raise your hand if you're in remote Zoom. You can hit star nine if you're on the phone. So please go ahead and raise your hands now if you'd like to speak during public comment. I'm going to go ahead and move to first to the list that we have before me. The first person that I have who signed up to speak this evening is Charles, and then I think it's dope or Doep. Oh, Johnny Depp, got it. All right. Thank you very much. Let me turn on your microphone and we'll make an adjustment through to the cameras. And go ahead.
Yes, well, good evening. Questions, I'm here because questions were asked at the last city council meeting in December regarding the interim zoning amendment to the tourist commercial zone, and this is affecting First Air Field. And basically, those questions went unanswered. So I just wanted to come up and answer those questions because I didn't really didn't know the, I really didn't know the process. First of the questions was, why is so much dirt needed for that particular property? Well, the airport itself is about fifteen to twenty feet below the level of the road and the business models for the hotels and entertainment venues. Again, it's a tourist commercial zone. They have to be built at street level. So as the property, the airport is fifteen to twenty feet below the street level, neither business, neither the hotels nor the entertainment venues are interested in the property. Additionally, and this is what the key is to bring the level of the buildable area up to the street would require massive amounts of landfill, and it's just not, it's just unsuitable and it's just not appropriate for hotels and entertainment businesses. The second question revolved around, what about the other approved uses in a tourist commercial zone? If government facilities are not allowed? Well, there are other uses that are available for the zone, but none of them are viable. Those other uses fall into things like coffee shops, restaurants, taverns, pharmacies, and drugstores. And what do all of these have in common? None of them are appropriate for over thirty acres of land, and all of the uses are in the real estate world are considered small developments with small footprints. In addition to that, there's no market or trade area for those type of businesses. And and this is key, since the property has been listed, there has been no buyers for any of those other types of properties that are approved in that zoning matrix. Basically, the market is non-existent for any of those other uses. The last question, it was really more of a kind of a characterization that the request to repeal the interim zoning amendment is a rush by the seller. Well, the seller's been trying to sell the property for twenty plus years, and the last three years since I've been involved, there's been many interested parties. Many of those parties have discussed a purchase and potential uses with the city. The sale in the property has been open and very well known, and I would think by any measure that three years is sufficient time for the city to work with the seller to try to find a solution. And you know, who wouldn't be frustrated that it has taken this long? And basically, I believe that any characterization that the seller is rushing the process is just back, basic factually in error. So what's a way forward here? The way forward with a ready, willing, and able buyer who's able to, you know, bring an asset to the city, which I believe meets both the cities and the seller's need is to allow for development agreement. And that's all I have. As always, thank you for consideration and good evening.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I'm going to go ahead and go to Mark Flurry.
But Charles, Charles Depp. And name is spelled first three letters are D O E is in dough, last two are the same P is in Papa, he's in public.
All right. Next person up that we have to speak is Mark Flurry. If you please come forward and please state your name for the record, and then we will start the clock. Thank you.
Hey, hi. My name is Mark Flurry. I'm a senior manager with Snohomish P U D. I'm the senior manager of transmission and distribution operations and engineering. I'm also accompanied here tonight with Brenda White, and Brenda is our senior local government and extra affairs manager. Then also Aaron Janisco, who's our regional design and construction services senior manager. And Aaron manages all of our local offices to include our existing current Monroe local office. So I wanted to come here tonight. There was expressed some interest at the December council meeting in what the P D might do with the property. And also some interest in what that site might look like. And so this afternoon, I submitted a copy of the letter, which will have the talking points I'll speak to tonight. And also submitted some elevations and artist renderings of a community office we're building right now in Arlington, which is a consolidated office that consolidates our Stanwood and Arlington offices into a single operations center. There's a number of efficiencies that are gained by doing that. And that's the same proposal that we have for East County. We're proposing to consolidate our Snohomish and Monroe offices at a central location. And we've looked at the first airfield site and are very keenly interested in that site. We've made an offer on that, as you know. And like to talk to you a little bit about what that might do for the community here in Monroe. So currently, we're serving Monroe and surrounding area from the Monroe office, which is a quite small office. It's very constrained. We have pole yard limitations there such that we have to drive all the way down to Roosevelt Road to get access to poles and transformers and bring them back if we're serving areas east of Monroe. This larger facility would have a larger pole yard, a larger warehouse, direct ship warehouse would have up to five crews initially on day one, which would be three more than we currently have serving Monroe. And also that facility would be designed to expand to eight to ten crews as the East County continues to grow. So very much a regional operation center, mimicking what we're doing up in North County and also mimicking what we have near Boeing Field in our Everett Operation Center. We're anticipating the facility would start with approximately forty employees as a consolidated office. And at a future date, expand to a total of seventy-eight, so very much a job creator for the community on East County. Now, the reason we settle on the first airfield site is we've spent quite a bit of due diligence on looking at properties. And it was really identified as the ideal property for a number of reasons, and I'll just highlight the key reasons tonight. Location, location, location. So the site is, you know, in the largest population center in East County. It's at a signalized intersection with access to S R two, close proximity to S R two oh three and S R five twenty-two. So really get it, get on some very fast roadways and be able to serve our customers in a timely fashion. Additionally, the size, it's very difficult to find a site of that size, which is what we need for a regional facility in this area that's served by public utilities like public sewer and public water. So really, just to sum up, what I think the benefit is to compete to the community is with safety always in mind, we're always striving to restore power as quickly as possible to our customers. And this new regional facility will allow us to do that in a more timely fashion for Monroe and the East County constituents.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. Next person to speak tonight is David Toyer. Oh, I'm sorry about that. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
What is it? If you were to have this and start this project, what is
Yes, my name is Scarborough. This is a time for the public to speak to us. I were not, we normally don't go back and forth with people during public comment period. Is this something that council, these are your rules of procedures, is something that council wanted to do is go back and forth with members of the audience? Okay, not saying that that's the case. Sorry about that, Councilmember Scarborough. Thank you.
I really appreciate your time tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you. Mr. Toyer, please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Members of Council, David Toyer, Toyer Strategic Advisors, Natalie Stevens, Washington, and we work with the the folks that are associated with the estate that owns First Air Field. Wanted to speak tonight in support of the ordinance to repeal the moratorium. Also wanted to encourage council that, you know, there is an opportunity here with the repeal of the moratorium to work with a user like Snohomish County P U D. Perhaps even through something in the form of the development agreement options that you have in your code, which are allowed by state law in which you'd be able to look at what their intended use of the property would be. And then look at what you might have concerns about as far as impacts go and come up with solutions for that. And development agreements are widely used in a lot of communities for a lot of different projects. And it would make a tremendous amount of sense in this particular case. I also want to just note the fact that, you know, public utility district and what they do is an essential piece of economic development and community services in the city of Monroe and the surrounding area. Power is an essential ingredient in economic development. If you run a supermarket, you need power. Without power, your goods go bad. If you run a manufacturing operation, you not only need power, but you need power quality. You can't have interruptions. It has to be good so that your machinery doesn't shut off, especially if you're operating precision machinery. And so for Monroe, who in your comprehensive plan and a bunch of your economic development analysis has a greater concentration of manufacturing in your community than many other communities around you, from an economic development perspective, having P U D and an operations center and the folks that can restore power quickly in your community is a very positive thing for economic development. Specific to the site in question, First Air Field, and that being a tourist commercial zone, it's not the only portion of your community's own tourist commercial. And staff had pointed that out at the last meeting. However, First Air Field is very unique because it's not really a site that's great for the types of uses contemplated in tourist commercial zoning. If you look at, you know, restaurants, let's just talk about the fact you've got a Denny's that has left the community that's on Main and Main. This is located off of the highway. This is down below the roadway. It's not an ideal location for a restaurant or a hotel or some of those other uses that need to draw consumers in to locate because they're competing against hotels and restaurants and retail that are already on Highway Two. They're already on the main corridor through town, and that's where folks are going to be going, and that's where the competition wants to take place. And so I would really encourage the the city council not only repeal the moratorium, but look at ways in which you can make projects such as what P U D has proposed work. There are mechanisms to find solutions and they don't
Mr. Toyer, I do need you to wrap up.
Thank you. So anyways, just wanted to encourage you to take a look at those other options and hopefully not just repeal the moratorium, but go beyond that and look at how you can support a project.
Thank you, Mr. Toyer. All right. Is there's anybody else who would like to speak this evening? So please go ahead and raise your hand. All right. Is there's anybody online? We have Shanna Habich. We'll go ahead and bring you forward one moment. All right, Shanna, you're in the panel. If you could go ahead and take yourself off mute, and if you'd like, turn your video on, please. And please go ahead and state your name for the record, and then we'll start the timer. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Shanna Havik. I'm representing the Havik family. And council members, I just wanted to make you aware that we are entering the third year of trying to diligently sell all three parcels of the first air property. Today also marks the one year anniversary of our father's death. Yet we here we are unable to satisfy his debts and pay the real estate taxes and estate taxes, which are incurring penalties and interest daily. We've had very, we've had various interest buyers in the property. We had a purchase and sale agreement with James G. Murphy in two thousand and twenty-one, but the city Monroe prohibited that sale in the pre-application discussions with a buyer. We learned from code interpretation exactly the type of buyer that the city defined as desirable and entered a purchase sale agreement with Snohomish County P U D with the exact definition of the property used to spell out in code, public works, maintenance, and storage facilities. Again, the city halted the sale of the property to Snohomish County P U D in the pre-app discussions, first by issuing a code interpretation that outdoor storage was prohibited, even though the stated permitted use is public works, maintenance, and storage facilities. And just in case that code interpretation didn't effectively kill the deal, the city adopted the interim ordinance two weeks before the sale was to close. Imagine the weight of the responsibility of managing an airport and a widow on top of our already busy work and personal lives. We were in escrow, moving forward with payoff amounts for mortgages held and final estate taxes due after death, not to mention numerous invoices for accountants, estate attorneys, CPAs, and all the other debts incurred during and after death. Imagine the relief we felt closing in on the end of this chapter of our lives and being able to move on, then once again, having it ripped away. No one on the city communicated with us or let us know that there were prohibiting the sale again, or even reached out to work together to reserve, to resolve the city's concerns and move forward with the sale. I understand that there's been some discussion about sending this matter to the planning commission. I beg you not to hold up discussions of a development agreement or any other resolution regarding our property matter while the planning commission discusses discusses the overall commercial tourist zone. We simply cannot afford to have this probate tied up any longer. The city's attempt to block our sales through court interpretation, the ordinance otherwise is rendering our property unsalable. We have received zero interest in tourist-related buyers, just like our agent Gerald said. There's no lodging, entertainment, or event facilities interest. For the past couple of years, our broker has actively solicited such businesses, including hotels and amusement park companies. The site is not feasible for any of those uses. We respectfully request that the city council repeal the interim ordinance following the comprehensive plan and invest its time into supporting economic development and property rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move you back to the attendees list.
Perfect.
Anybody else would like to speak this evening? Please go ahead and raise your hand. Okay. Not seeing anybody. We're going to go ahead and we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I turn to council. Waiting for a hand to go up. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I moved to approve the consent agenda as established here.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Davis, a second from Councilmember Hanford. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmembers Kenny and Scarborough, I see that your lights are on. Did you want to speak to the motion? Nope. All right. Again, anybody interested in speaking to the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? Abstentions. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business item number six point one, initial twenty forty-four housing allocation methodology options. And I will turn to our planning manager, Kate Turtolo, who is Mike Farrell this evening. It's the microphone.
Oh, got you. Thank you. So unfortunately, this is a little bit out of order. I have not had the opportunity to come back to the council and talk about the comprehensive plan, but there are multiple pieces that are moving that are out of our control time wise. One of them has to do with the housing allocation that the city of Monroe will be receiving from Snohomish County via the Snohomish County Tomorrow Collaborative. And this is a result of House Bill twelve twenty, which passed in two thousand and twenty-one, and it amended the Growth Management Act, saying that you need to do a better job basically of accommodating housing for all people in your community based on income levels. The Washington State Department of Commerce was given the task of coming up with methods for each jurisdiction to accomplish this. And so they give us the base number of population, working with the Office of Financial Management. They work with Department of Commerce, so we know Snohomish County has to accommodate X number of people and X number of jobs by two thousand and forty-four. In addition to that, we now have a housing population, which is done through Snohomish County Tomorrow Countywide Planning Policies, House Housing Bill H O five. And so that's really what I'm here for this evening. The first step was the information was provided to the planning. See, what is it? It's the PAC, Planning Administrative Committee, which is basically the planning directors. And so there was a subcommittee that looked at all of the options. Could you go to the next slide? Be helpful. Thank you. And so the smaller group of city planning directors got together and options A and B were basically provided by the Washington Department of Commerce. And they looked at what that meant for Monroe and all over their communities in Snohomish County. Option A basically says, we have this total number of housing and it's based on income level. So just to give you an example, a hundred percent of A M I, which is the American median family income for Snohomish County is now a hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars, and that's based on heads calculations, which is also a significant change from the last time you did a comp plan update. We used to use the the American Community Survey five-year estimate. There's a twenty thousand difference in what that median income is. And so you work backwards. So when it's talking about the thirty percent, that's thirty percent of a hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars. That's the group of people that we're trying to find housing for. So option A, again, you have to accommodate all of these new housing units with new construction. And so for us, I'll get to the next slide, which has the numbers for you. It gives, I'm going to go back and forth. So it's that at the bottom where it says method A, we would need to produce three hundred and seventy-eight new housing units for people who are at thirty percent A M I. And it works across going to the right, if you can go back, please. So alternative B takes into account that every community has some form of attainable or affordable housing. And so this gives you credit. Monroe has Housing Hope. We have some Snohomish County Housing Authority. So we would get credit for that amount of housing that we're already providing. You could advance. The interesting piece of this, though, is that by getting credit for what we're already providing, we would actually have negative numbers. And in theory, another community would have to take on that excess amount that we are getting credit for. So the planning director said, there's got to be a better way. So I can go back. Thank you. They came up with a hybrid, which is basically a combination of A and B. But if you're already providing, you're still getting credit for providing affordable housing in your community, but you don't go negative. That's that's the baseline. And so another community, I, the best extreme to me is Woodway. There's not a lot of affordable housing in that community, and they're not going to be asked to take up the difference that Monroe is already providing. And so this information was provided to us back in December. And I wanted to bring it to the council and the mayor because this is not a decision that the planning department wants to make on its own. We do need to come back with a preferred alternative for the city of Monroe, most likely now at their March meeting. The Department of Commerce again is setting some of the broad umbrella pieces, and they're not finished with their analysis. Next slide. So I did want to show you, though, this is really important. If you go with option A, in reality, based on the housing needs assessment that was done as part of the housing, the hap, housing affordability plan back in two thousand and twenty-one, option A actually gets us closer to the the number of housing units we need based on our own analysis. But the thing that I I think is going to be so challenging is how do we do that? And that's something that this board and the planning commission, we're going to have to figure out what techniques and tools are actually going to help us as a city of Monroe get to these goals. And so professionally, I'm more comfortable with the hybrid option C. So that's a really high level of what I'm here for this evening. I did want to bring you back to your packets. I included the presentation that was given to the planning directors by Snohomish County back in December. And then I also gave you the summary report for House Bill twelve twenty, which is setting the stage of why all of these new requirements are coming forward. It's a lot of information. So if you have questions, I'm happy to respond. And you do not need to, I'm looking for some kind of a consensus from the council. I don't need action tonight because we were given a reprieve to March instead of February. So I'm happy to come back at a later meeting and see what other questions you have for me, or if you have some direction for us to take back to the to the pack.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for our planning manager? Any thoughts at this time? Go ahead, Councilmember Kenny.
I've just a quick question. I was just looking at, gosh, I think it's page fourteen in the presentation that you provided in the packet. And it lists all the different communities and, you know, their totals. How are we looking in terms of existing inventory in terms of housing compared to other communities of our size?
So got to get the big packet out. I can tell you, population wise, we're one point, we account for one point three two percent of the entire population for Snohomish County. As for the housing, are you asking for our total housing or how much we're providing in the attainable categories?
How much we you were just mentioning a few minutes ago that we already have somewhere providing through Housing Hope and other programs like that. So I'm just curious how we stack up.
I'm going to have to bring that back because I did not bring that information with me tonight, but I will have
No problem. Thank you.
Are there any other questions the council members might have? Again, as our planning manager Turtolo mentioned, we can bring stuff back. Councilmember Davis.
Yes, I'd like a little bit of time to look at this further and maybe some pros and cons for each one of the different methods to get a good idea. There's nothing deep, but just some quick.
All right. Sounds good. Other questions or requests from the council? Okay, so and then looking online, anything from Councilmembers Fisher or Gamble? I didn't see your hands go up, but I just want to make certain. Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and we'll set something up probably for February sometime to bring in more information. Thank you, Manager Turtolo. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item is new business item six point two. This is repeal ordinance number zero three zero twenty twenty-two B, adopting interim zoning. Sorry, adopting interim zoning amendments, chapter twenty-two point two four, Monroe Municipal Code, Tourist Commercial Zoning District. And this is going to our director, Lance Bailey. So go ahead and I'll turn on your mic real quick. And let me just change the camera over to you. All right, go ahead.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just real quick, I wanted to give a little bit of background, just to to reacquaint you with the the timeline of 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 how we've gotten here today. Back in October, the city had adopted an interim ordinance that affected specifically the government facility uses within the tourist commercial zone. By state law, anytime the city adopts an interim ordinance, we're required to come back within sixty days and hold a public hearing. So the city, the city did that on December the sixth. There was, there were comments and testimony that were submitted at that meeting. The meeting, the hearing was continued in order for staff to supply some some responses to that. So we came back on the thirteenth with the continuation of that hearing. At that hearing, the city council had passed a motion to direct staff to to bring back an ordinance that would repeal the the interim ordinance. So that's that's sort of how we've gotten here today. I wanted to to reiterate a couple of things for your for your consideration because I know there's been a lot of discussion about this and there's frankly, a few, a number of moving parts to this. So just time to to narrow it down to the to the simplest, to the simplest elements is the interim ordinance affected only a small portion of the uses within the tourist commercial zone. And within that government facility, there's there's six specific uses. Overall, there's twenty-eight uses allowed in the tourist commercial zone. So we're talking about a small portion of it. And and also to reiterate to to the council that I know we've we've had a lot of testimony that's been provided regarding one specific property and just want to remind council that the interim ordinance affects all of the parcels within the tourist commercial zone. And so in any changes that are made affect affect the the zone across across, it's not just that one property. One other thing, just because I know it came up in discussion at the last meeting about the because I know it came up in discussion at the last meeting about the outdoor storage uses. And I wanted to hopefully clarify some of that in that the the outdoor storage uses and and the appeal that is occurring for with in regards to the director's interpretation on outdoor storage is not is not a part of the interim ordinance. It is really not a part of the action that that council would be making tonight. That is a separate piece that is going through the process and will ultimately go to the the hearings examiner for it for a decision. But it's 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 a separate piece from the from the interim ordinance. And the the repeal of the ordinance would would reinstate essentially would reestablish sort of the status quo in terms of the the government facility uses that were there. And I did want to, I did want to respond some to to the general comments that have occurred. And I know that there, I understand the frustration of the property owner, but I but I did want to reiterate that this action, the action that that staff came to this to counsel with, we counsel made in in regards to adopting the interim ordinance was not about this one property. It's 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 really about the implementation and the intent and the purpose of the tourist commercial zone. And, you know, there there was, there has been some discussion over over the years, as you heard in the testimony. There had been other parties that had come forward proposing uses that were determined to not be allowed in in that zone. And and staff in the city were were very clear in that communication. It wasn't, the actions are not intended to prevent the sale of the property. We're simply trying to trying to implement the tourist commercial zone as it's written and trying to understand the the purpose and the intent of that zone. And I, you know, we've had this discussion to try to to try to explain what that is and where there might be some disconnect between the intent and the purpose and the uses that are allowed in the in the use matrix. So that's what generated the interim ordinance. And I did want to clarify in regards to the motions because in in the
Director Bailey, before you continue, councilmember Gamble's got his hand up. So before you move on to the next topic, I'm going to go ahead and see what councilmember Gamble.
I guess I'm a little confused, though. Director Bailey, because if our intent is to do it based off how it's written, then why would we need the emergency ordinance?
Well, I guess I would I would emphasize that emphasize that it was intended to to clarify the potential disconnect between the language and the intent and the purpose statement and the use
Not what you said, though. I guess that's what I'm struggling with because it's it's pretty clearly stated. What is, you know, allowed specifically PUD districts, that public district. So I, there's two pieces, part of your testimony right there that don't really match what we talked about previously. So I want to make sure that we reflect it right because so you're saying that had this sale not gone through, we would have had an emergency ordinance in October? This wouldn't have come forward to us?
The timing may have been a little different.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Gamble. Before we go back to you, Director, councilmember Fulter, did you have something? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Director Bailey.
Yeah, just I wanted to clarify this. This is the the language that was in the agenda bill. And I and I know that 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 on the screen, we had the, it's a little bit different in terms of the motion options, just so that that council understands that the action this evening would be to to do if you decided to to do first reading of this ordinance. You do have the option to waive council rules and do second reading as well.
All right.
It wasn't clear in the agenda bill. I apologize for having the way that was written up, but I think, you know, what's up on the screen is is more clear in terms of that.
Okay, anything further, Director Bailey?
No further.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fulter, go ahead.
How many properties are involved in these in this zone?
There's 21 properties.
21. Okay, and so seems like the argument has been about one lately, but I really do want to address the the zone as a whole and what what we would like to have there and the 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 comp plan clearly states that it's it's tourist commercial, it's to provide amenities such as lodging, entertainment, and event facilities that serve the traveling public. So I'm looking at that and I'm saying, does any of that work with the placement of government facilities? And that's really what we were talking about last year was let's address the government facilities portion. We want to send that back to Planning Commission just to to take a look to see if that really does work with what we want in the to, that's like the one-off, you know, you see a bunch of things that go together, and then you see that one that just doesn't fit. And to me, the government facilities portion is the portion that just doesn't fit. And so that's why I believe that we should be sending that back to to planning commission to to take a look at. Because we're talking about the good of the community, not just this one property. And there's there's so many more options than just this one. So with that, since I have the floor, I'm going to move to accept as first reading repealing ordinance number 0302022B, terminating the interim zoning amendments for chapter 22.24 NMC Tourist Commercial Zoning District enacted under said ordinance, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second, Fisher.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept as first reading repealing ordinance number 0302022B, etc. From councilmember Fulter with a second from councilmember Fisher. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Fisher, did you have anything further? I'm sorry, Fulter.
Yeah, I do. I just have to take a moment to to put my thoughts here together. The reason I want to do to accept this as first reading only is because we have talked many times from this very dais about how it's so important to have our first reading and second reading and to just forego that this time and go straight to second and adopting, I am not. I think that you'd be against what you've talked about before. So that's why I want to accept as first reading, give us a little more time to talk about it because we have two of our members gone right now. And there, now I'm done.
All right, thank you, councilmember Fulter. Councilmembers Scarborough, go ahead.
Yeah, as as stated from Councilman Fulter, I understand you're okay with a first reading, but you're demanding a second reading, basically. Okay. Because I would not move to waive the council procedures. And I personally have a question of the PUD. I guess it's, is this the right time I may ask that now? You can ask it of staff, yes. Okay, their their proposal that they have given us. Do they have a timeline if they purchased the property when this would be done?
Director Bailey, go ahead.
On that, so just so you know, this is the first time that I've seen those documents today myself. So there is no application submitted that is associated with the drawings. So I couldn't today give you a timeline on what on what that application period would be.
Thank you. Go, go ahead, manager Turtolo, let me turn on your microphone.
Thank you. So the so the PUD came in for pre-application over the summer or fall before August. And when they were presenting the materials, they were saying this is a five-year phased project. So they did talk about development agreements. That was also discussed during the conversation. I had been responding to their app, one of their parties who works with David Evans and Associates. He and I had been going back and forth about the outdoor storage, which Director Bailey mentioned today. So their long-term needs for this property was explained to us would be a five-year phase development.
Okay, in your conversations with them, have they said what they would want to store in outdoor storage? Have they said that they might be able to use the hangers? And indoor storage? And would that be acceptable? In your conversations, looking at this building, this is a remarkable building to me. And I can see where this could be a tremendous good thing for the us, Monroe, Snohomish County, our need for PUD to be close. So I'm really, I have, I have other questions. Do you have any of those answered?
Sure. So their pre-application did include two lay-down yards for their equipment and the proposal suggested using the runway for outdoor storage of their vehicles, which by our definition is outdoor storage. They did not include use of the existing hangers. That was not part of the proposal.
Okay, so if they were to give us, if they were to buy the property and give us this proposal, then we would have to go back to them and say, we need you to provide indoor storage for all the things you're suspecting to have in your outdoor storage, i.e. whatever goes along the runway. And they would at that time have to say, they would have to comply. They would have to comply because that's what's in the ordinance now, or they would have to vacate the idea of building this?
That's correct. And that's why we have an appeal right now on the administrative interpretation for outdoor storage in the tourist commercial. I will add that the proposed pre-application included a warehouse and heated indoor storage in addition to the needed laydown yard.
Okay. Well, here's here's my concern with what we're doing here. We have an ordinance. They have bought it or proposed to buy it in good faith with that ordinance, at which time we can go back and say, your plans don't fit our ordinance. And they can comply with or not comply with, at which point they own a piece of property that they can't do anything with. And that's one thing. And second, I would suggest or or submit that we could propose hotels on the east or on the North Kelsey property. It would be just about, wouldn't be as close to the fairgrounds as what we want across from there. But it could be developed with a new walking path on Highway 2 that is in close proximity of a walking to the fair. If we had hotels in that area, we have I want to, I want to liken it to East Monroe. And some people on the county, on the council up here can identify with that. Suppose the property owner of East Monroe owned it and it was commercial then, not them trying to change it to commercial. It was commercial. And we, they said, well, we want to sell the property to an entity that fits the commercial zoning. And we, as a council, went back and said, well, we're changing the rules now. We don't want it to be a big box store. We don't want it to be a slaughterhouse. We don't want it to be this or that. So we're saying it doesn't fit the ordinance because we have reinterpreted the ordinance. I mean, that's to me is ingenuous of what we're doing. They have made some tremendously good arguments about why it won't be sold or people with hotels don't want to buy it because they would have to fill 15 feet of fill in a good-sized piece of property. They have to Ken Ken's with the gas line, which hasn't been spoken about yet tonight in this presentation. And that, to me, those are, to me, the gas line is an even bigger concern for somebody who wants to put a hotel on there than having to fill 15 feet. So myself, I will, I will be voting to appeal the emergency ordinance.
All right, thank you, councilmember Scarborough. Any other discussion, councilmember Scarborough, on the motion that's been placed before us? All right, councilmember Davis, go ahead.
So if I could get a little clarification on what we're voting for exactly in this motion?
Yes, the motion that was made was move to accept as first reading. Reading repealing ordinance number 0302022B, terminating the interim zoning amendments to chapter 22.24 NMC Tourist Commercial Zoning District, enacting under said ordinance, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Which means that, as you're aware, and just for the listening public, that means you'd be accepting this as first reading and it'd be returning to council for a second reading and consideration for final action, consistent with the rules of procedure.
Okay, I would just like to say, I, last December, when this came up, I was ready to repeal it at that time, based on the information that we had. When we passed the emergency ordinance, it was in order to take a look at this and 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 get some more information on what we were going to do, what, why would we want to do this? I think we've gotten plenty of information that I didn't have before, things that speak directly to the fact that it's almost impossible to consider some of the things we were thinking about going in there actually happened. And and then they they provided pretty good evidence that that's been looked at and it's been discounted as as a possibility. That with that information, I I pretty much made up my mind on this. So I'm I'm ready to repeal it right now. It's ready to repeal it in December. But if we vote for this motion, then we're going to have to wait till when to to do a second reading.
I think that the next regular meeting is February 28th. Or are we looking at February 7th? So for, just to clarify, in case other councilmembers have questions, in the event that the motion passes, second reading could occur normally on the 28th or the or the 7th of February if the council decides to make the 7th a regular meeting. Right, a business meeting, thank you. So that is your question, councilmember Davis?
Yes, and this having been, I understand the desire to have first and second readings, but this is an emergency ordinance. It happened quickly, and I think that in my mind, I've already made my decision. I would like it to end quickly. And I would prefer to to not have readings, but to go ahead and waive the council procedures and just vote to repeal it this evening. I don't know how the other council members feel about that, but that's my idea. If not, then I'll go along the motion as stated.
Okay, thank you. So in the event that the council votes down the current motion, then somebody can make that next motion, which would be to to waive the rules of procedure. Thank you, councilmember Davis and councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, very similar to councilmember Davis. Councilmember Ozzy, I totally understand first and second readings, but we have a history of waiving council rules of procedure for items that have impacted by time. I feel like 90 days for basically something that I just I don't believe we want to be known for changing rules midship on a property owner or constituent to add another 30 on top of that, just as, I can't do that in good conscience. That's just not right. So I'll be voting against this first reading so that we could, I can make subsequent motion to move why council rules of procedure. Unless, and this is where I've got to, you know, ask a question, can we make, we've done them in the past, motions on top of the existing motion that's on the floor to move council rules of procedure to adopt an ordinance at first reading and then take the subsequent vote after that.
I'm sorry.
So that's a question.
Hold on. Okay, so that's not amending the motion. That's a, that's a very Okay, so that's not amending the motion, that's a, that's a very different. That's like moving to approve something and then moving to deny something, it's not an amendment, right? From first reading to adopt, okay, and that's, that's allowed. Zach, do you have any, just a second, Zach, do you have any uh question uh response on that?
But I, I, I think that your original, or the original surmise that that was a completely different motion rather than simply an amendment is an accurate one. Um it, the, the motion that's currently on the floor can be amended and that can be amended one more time. But if I understand councilmember gamble's proposal, it, it really isn't amending this motion, it's, it's completely. Changing it to be uh fundamentally opposite. And for that.
Absolutely not, I, I agree with the motion that's on the floor. My motion Zach is to, I would like to have a vote of council on whether or not we want to uh. Waive council rules of procedure for uh being able to have it confirmed on a first reading. I'm in complete agreement with the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, then, then with uh that clarification, I do believe that that's similar enough, I understand councilmember gambles. Request or proposal, it would be to essentially combine the existing motion on the floor to have. Only first reading this evening and combine that with a council mo- a motion to waive the rules of procedure.
That's correct.
All right, um. So uh. We've got, we've got head scratching going on here, Jason. Is there any reason from your perspective why we couldn't dispense with the current motion and then? And then do yours, I, I, I.
Yeah, cause there, then my next question would be. Basically abstain, cause I don't want to vote against the motion, I agree with it. See what I'm saying?
So, so let me, let me, let me understand, all right.
You get what I'm saying, I'd like to have the vote, I, I just want to know whether or not we can have a, a vote on whether or not we want to rule council, waive council's rules of procedure. If people don't want to, vote there. And then we'll vote on the motion, this is out of order, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Zach, do you have a?
Very briefly counsel, the, the combining the two motions and to include a waiver of, of council rules of procedure. With the motion on the floor, I think is permissible, those are complimentary. Um however, you can break them out separately and, and what I would like to remind the council is that. Any action that you take in violation or disregard of your local rules of procedure. Will be deemed to be an im- an implicit waiver, so you technically don't need to waive your rules of procedure if you don't want to. If you take final action or, or a vote on something this evening in disregard of your rules. Uh that, that's going to be considered as, as if you had already voted to waive that rule, F Y I for the council.
So Jason, I just want to clarify, so what you would do then is based on what you're seeing on the screen. Is you would have the effect of, of doing.
Vote on the amendment, which is to waive council rules of procedure, like we've done before. And then based on whether that, you know. Succeeds or fails, you're gonna have a vote on the next one anyway.
Zach?
Go ahead Zach.
Very, very briefly counsel, it segmenting the two motions out into separate. Questions, first to waive the rules of procedure and then to return to the motion on the floor, I don't think is correct. I think that the, the, the motion on the floor can be amended to incorporate a waiver request or proposal as part of that. But if there's going to be an entirely new motion made, that should wait until the, uh the, the, the motion on the floor has been um. Uh addressed, my, my question just for, for purposes of my recollection, has there been a second of, uh for the? Okay, thank you, that, that, that advice stands, thank you.
All right, so Jason, are you wanting to amend the motion at this time?
Sure.
Okay, so please go ahead and, and state what your amended motion is.
I would like to, based off of the testimony that has been given and then also on the feedback that councilmember Davis is out, have provided. Um I too have seen everything I need to see and I think it's detrimental to the property owner. Uh to wait another thirty days just for second reading, nothing's gonna change my mind, we've done this countless times, waiving council rules of procedure. Um in fact, that's the reason why we left in a first and second is because we have stability to vote, um we just talked about this. So I'm gonna uh move to amend the motion to waive council rules of procedure to adopt an ordinance in first reading. And moved to accept as first reading, repealing ordinance number zero three zero twenty twenty two B terminating. Interim zone amendments to chapter twenty two dot two four M M C tourist commercial zoning district enacted under said ordinance, providing for severability and establishing effective date.
Yeah, I have a motion from councilmember gamble uh for what was just read into the record and uh second from councilmember Davis. Uh we are now moving to discussion on that motion. Is there any discussion on the amendment to that motion as stated? Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Unfortunately, the, the motion should have said move to accept as first and final reading, it got deleted some. Sometime during this meeting. Uh but that's what the original verbiage said, so.
What he said, thank you.
Okay, just a second, we're gonna have the clerks make, uh make adjustments. Zach, I'll turn to you in just a second.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm understanding that if we take the first, those first two sentence under motion options. That is the, that is what uh councilmember Hanford uh just suggested. That the amended motion should be. So move to waive council rules of procedure, dot, dot, dot. And also move to accept as first reading and adopt repealing ordinance number, dot, dot, dot.
First and final reading, I think is what councilmember Hanford said.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna add after first reading. We're gonna add, um we're gonna make that first and final reading. So after the word first, no, I'm sorry, after the first. After the word first. It's okay, we're doing this on the fly, uh so move to accept as first and final reading. Okay. Councilmember Hanford, does that look like what it was that you were asking for?
I think so, I don't remember the word adopt being there, I might be wrong, I don't know that we need to adopt any, we're repealing something, we're not adopting something.
Yep, I'm gonna call on Zach next, I just want to make certain that the councilmembers have what they're looking for on the screen. Councilmember Hanford, anything else, and then I'm gonna double check with Jason and then we'll go to Zach.
Uh just a moment, please. Yeah, if that's correct with, with, with uh our attorney, then, then that's fine. I, I did have more thoughts after your, after you check with him.
Okay, I, I want to make sure we're doing this correctly, so just, yep. Okay, so the, the numbers that are correct uh to our clerks or an, um and adopt ordinance number zero zero two twenty twenty three. Repealing ordinance number, dot, 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 okay, Jason, does that look like what you're? Okay, so we had a first and a second for the first amendment that was made for, uh I'm sorry, Zach. I'm thinking to, to clear the record, should we just vote on that first motion that was made and then invite councilmember gamble to, to. Reamend or are you comfortable with what's written on the screen?
I will defer to the council uh regarding its policy preferences and there's obviously an apparent difference of opinion on that and that, that's the council's. In- individual prerogative, um my concern is making sure that, that everyone on the council dais is clear about. The effect of what is currently in the voting queue and what you're voting on. Um and I, as I construe the, the motion as it is proposed and as it has been proposed to be amended. You would be doing two things or actually three things, first of. Moving to waive your rules of procedure to allow the adoption of this repealer ordinance at tonight's meeting. Second, you would be moving to have first reading of that ordinance at tonight's meeting. And third, you would be ha- voting to have final reading and formal adoption of that ordinance. And the ordinance that is being referred to tonight in that reference is the repealer ordinance, ordinance number zero zero. Two, two thousand and three, the one that's in your packet tonight, the legal effect of which would be to repeal, to terminate. The interim zoning ordinance that was originally adopted back in October. That created the interim amendments to the tourist commercial zone. That's how I construe this, and if there's a different intent by the council, I think it's important that that get clarified with further amendments. Um before the council takes a final vote on this.
Uh Zach, what you've described to me is what I think everybody understands at the dais. I just want to make certain the mechanism is correct, we had a motion on the floor, we had an amendment to the motion with a second. No vote, um and then uh, and then the second to the motion or, or maybe another council member uh made some revisions to that on top of it, so. Um for me, parentheticals, I've got three sets of parentheticals in my head and I just. If everybody's, Zach, if you're telling me that. That one and two right there is, is fine and we don't need to vote on something to.
Well, what needs to be voted on, just to be clear, is actually the amendment first, correct, and then on the, the underlying motion itself.
Okay, so let's do this, councilmember gamble, you were the maker of the motion, uh does this reflect what you intended when you made the oral uh amendment? Okay, and who was the second, was it Davis? Councilmember Davis, does this reflect what you intended by your oral um second? Okay, all right, uh do all the councilmembers understand the amendment to the motion that's currently on the floor, which is essentially number one and number two? On the screen. Does anybody not understand that? All right. We're gonna go ahead and vote on, uh okay, any discussion on the amendment to the motion, councilmember Hanford, you said you wanted to speak more to the amendment on the motion?
Oh, you told the amendment's done.
Okay, we're gonna vote on the amendment to the motion, does anybody have anything else, looking online, Kyle, Jason, I don't see your hands up. No lights are on, Kevin, you're in the queue, we're gonna go ahead and vote now, all in favor of the amendment. All opposed?
Hi.
Okay, so if I, if I heard correctly, we've got three voting against, they are councilmembers Kenny. Fulcher and Fisher. Is there anybody that voted uh against that I did not name? All right, motion passes for three. Um we now have the main motion, uh if you've, uh since the, the amendment passed. Turning to our clerks, do we need to vote on the main motion, seems like the answer is yes and it. Oh, that's right. Okay. So we're gonna vote on the same thing we just did, uh because what we did there is we amended it, thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead, we're gonna do a, just a roll call vote, um so, so we're back to the main motion as amended. Which is what we just read in. Kevin, you wanted to say a few words, so I'm gonna turn to Kevin for, uh and then anybody else that wants to speak on that main motion, so council, councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, mayor. Uh now that we've got to this point, I just wanted to say. Uh I concur with councilmember Davis and gamble. Uh I normally do not like to waive rules of procedure, but this is some, this is not anything new to us. This is something that we've been talking about and working at for quite a while, so. Uh I will be voting in favor.
Okay, thank you, anybody else that wants to speak to the main motion as amended? All right, seeing none, we'll just go down on a roll call vote, uh which means Jody's gonna call your name and you can say yes, no, or abstain. Councilmember Wykoff. Uh let me hit your microphone real quick. Your clerk, right? All right, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Fulcher. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember gamble.
Yes, and just for the record, you can't hear the other councilmembers' ro- votes on the roll call that you just went through online.
Okay, uh so right now we have. Jody, can, can you mention what the votes are and then I will turn on all the microphones?
Yes, do you want me to finish with the roll call, I have one.
No, I'd like you to stay with the votes are currently, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Hanford was yes, councilmember Kenny was no, councilmember Fisher was no, councilmember Fulcher was no. Councilmember Davis was yes, councilmember gamble was yes.
You're, you're next.
Councilmembers.
Okay, please continue.
Councilmember Scarborough.
All right. All right, motion passes for three um with uh councilmembers Kenny, Fisher and. Uh Fulcher voting against, all right, thank you very much, everybody, um and is there any? Else uh turning to planning on this, I want to make certain that we've uh taken care of everything. Okay, and then uh turning to Zach, was there anything else that you needed on this item?
Nothing from my end, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh my purpose was just to get clarity on what the council's intent was.
All right, thank you, and uh councilmembers, if you could cancel out your microphones if they're, unless you intend to speak, I'd appreciate it. I turned everybody on. All right, let me turn off Lance. Councilmember Hanford, did you mean to speak next? Is councilmember Kenny turning the microphone off and on? Um okay, so we're getting ready for councilmember reports, but councilmember uh Hanford, did you have one other item?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to speak to what we just talked about and what we heard from uh the public tonight. And I, I would love to, to see. Uh the city work with the P U D and the, of business. Of the property owner to see what we can do to work with them on developing this property and. Would hope that we would be uh. Easy to work with entity after the tumultuous couple of months.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Hanford. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to councilmember reports and we will start off with uh online, uh councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Nothing to report, thank you.
All right, thank you, councilmember gamble.
Yeah, it's gonna be the, the plug every week, just a reminder, uh we've got. March twenty fourth, that Song River uh is the uh public uh school foundation auctions for support in our schools here. And a lot of you have already reached out to me and we've got councilmembers contributing, uh but please spread the word, it's our first live auction and a chance for the community. Uh to support our students, faculty. Uh in person with a in-person auction at uh and, and we've moved the auction home. Uh to downtown of the Song River, so. Reach out, go online, Monroe Public School Foundation dot org. Um gonna be a great night, that's it, that's all I got.
All right, thank you, uh councilmember uh Scarborough, go ahead.
Yes, uh. The only thing I have, and she's jolly, maybe speaking to this in his report. Is I'm getting a lot of people around town talking to me about the. Amount of graffiti that has started to crop up. And uh the amount of homelessness. Camping on our streets and. Emptying their cart on the corner of Maine and Lewis to uh take inventory and. Just. Behind Safeway, I'm told, up behind the Goodwill, up behind the Lutheran Church. Um the amount of. Homeless camps and garbage around town and the graffiti on places that we haven't seen it. So I don't have an answer. But I will identify it as people in our community are identifying it to me. Other than that, I'm sorry, I missed the uh. The Bendel Run, although I wouldn't have run, I might have walked or rode a bike or something, but. My fault, my bad, I just forgot it, so I'm sorry, but for those people who attended. Attended it, it. As I looked into it, I thought maybe it was only a five year old thing, but come to find out it's been eleven years. Since that tragedy occurred and uh. And tragedy it was, but that's all I have.
All right, thank you, um the chief and uh community development director will uh reply uh during the, uh during the staff reports. Uh councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Uh nothing to report tonight, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I had the opportunity to attend um Monroe Equity Council event.
On January eleventh, a woman named Erin Jones came to town to speak. And it was really well-attended, really interesting. This was uh you may know Erin as someone who recently ran for um O S P I. Uh superintendent and lost by, I think, one percent, but uh really great speaker. Um spoke a lot about uh equity in the community and was very, very in enlightening. And it was a great community, sort of come together, uh all of us, and I really enjoyed that. Also missed the Jamie Bindle Run. Usually I'm out there running, and I was in Park City skiing, and I was really sorry to miss that, so I hope it was a good turnout. And that is just a wonderful event every year, and I know it supports behind the Badge Foundation, so I'm sorry I missed that. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Fulture?
Uh just one thing to put on your calendars. Um coming up in two weeks, on the ninth of February, we have, we are having once again the uh fire chief. And most importantly, the police chief um for coffee time at Monroe Coffee Company. Please come on out and, you know, give him a hug and tell him how much you love him and all that, and have some good coffee and free cookies. Just a plug. Oh, thank you, councilmember Kenny. It's from nine to eleven. Get that? Nine, eleven? All right. On the ninth of, on the ninth of February, you know the place, great coffee place down the street. Yeah, uh huh, that's the one.
Anything for the councilmember culture?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, councilmember Davis?
I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Um we'll go ahead and go down uh Finance Department reports, uh Director Hassert, go ahead and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The truncated December two thousand and twenty-two report is in your packet. And um I am available for questions, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Director Hassert? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the next uh community development report. Director Bailey, go ahead.
Um so for the um in in the report this month, I, the highlighted project is a um adult family home. Um who have recently opened, and I think one of the highlights for that is um they had received uh money from through the ARPA funding. And they are currently open. Um I believe they have four rooms, so um welcome them to business. Um from the staff standpoint, I want to give a big um shout out to uh Daryl Hammond, um who has. Uh retired finally. Um maybe it'll stick this time. Um but he had worked with the city for three years. Daryl had been working in the, he was uh doing plan, plan review. And um and inspections when needed on an on on-call basis. Uh and and Daryl really helped um. Get the city through uh some busy times and was really instrumental in helping to train some some new staff. And he has twenty-five years of of working in the business and had taught taught classes in. Um in building code, so he's gonna be, he's gonna be missed, but we. We wish him the best in his retirement. Um. I did wanna uh to to respond to our councilmember uh. Scarborough's comment about graffiti specifically, uh that is an emphasis in for code enforcement. And the code enforcement officer has been working with with the police. And I know that we've had some some incidents where uh particularly back in during the cold snap. Where there were some graffiti that in places that we hadn't seen it before. And the property owners were um unfortunately uh hampered by the weather in or in in terms of being able to. To get the graffiti off, but I believe they have now. Um and um it it is gonna remain a focus of code enforcement until. We can um get a better handle on that, so we are addressing it.
All right, any questions for uh Director? Bailey, uh go ahead, councilmember Scarborough.
Now. What I what I thought I interpreted you as saying is. That we're depending on code enforcement. Which puts the onus on the owner of the building with the graffiti to fix it. I want to know what we might be doing in law enforcement. To fix the people doing the graffiti.
I'll.
That'd be my.
I'll let law enforcement respond to that.
We'll go to law enforcement in a minute. Um anything, so you're you're more concerned about. Stopping people from doing the graffiti, okay, rather than painting it over. Got it?
Yeah, I'm looking at it more from the law enforcement side than a uh you fix it side because it's your building.
Okay, thank you. Uh Director Bailey, I do appreciate all the work you've been doing at my request to focus on the graffiti, so thank you. All right, um councilmember Hanford, you had your hand up too?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I I just wanted to recognize Daryl. Uh. He helped me with my project a few years ago, and uh I actually have known him personally for years. And uh so I'm really glad that and hope that the retirement sticks this time. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for um Director Bailey? All right, thank you. Um we're gonna go to city clerk next. Uh okay, let me hit your mic. There you go.
Good evening. This is my first report ever, so we'll be doing a quarterly report, and I have to thank uh Sherry Simonson for making it look so pretty. Um just a couple of highlights. Uh we will be giving some updates about what the grant funding that we received is accomplishing. There's some cool before and after pictures related to all of the plans that community development was able to send out. Um we'll also be giving uh quarterly updates, uh first statistics related to public record requests. And um some highlights. So this last uh report is a highlight on um some of the events that we helped coordinate. Uh including uh visits and dinners with our legislators. And then a reminder, this is my opportunity to shout out that if you have not taken your Open Government Training Act training, please do so. And get me your certificate. If you have taken it, please get me your certificate. And then um the last thing is um between now and June, we're gonna be um doing. Monthly, what we're calling Record Roundup Days, where the entire city staff is going to be focusing on cleaning up. And and hopefully getting rid of some records so that we don't have to move them to our temporary relocation. Location. Um and we will be giving some updates, hopefully with some really cool before and aftershocks.
All right, thank you. Any questions for? For Clerk Wykoff? Uh go ahead, councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh the the Open Government Training, that's every four years, correct? And didn't, don't, though, I can, I'm pretty sure that after. People are elected, that's when you. Twist their arm to get it done. Is that correct?
Um what what I can, what I could suggest is that uh that maybe Clerk Wykoff can um contact the councilmembers for whom she does not have a. Certificate that is within the current term of office.
I can do that.
That'd be great. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for this report. It was really interesting, and I love the picture of our museum on the cover. It was lovely. And I'm just really impressed with the work that you are both doing and just wanted to say thank you. And it's great to see an actual report where we can. Really identify every single little thing you're doing, so thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for Clerk Wykoff? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the Human Resources I T report. With Director. Let's just say night. That's fine.
Director Ward. It says night right there.
This is also my first report. Uh the bulk of my stuff is in your packet. I did want to point out a couple of important anniversaries. Jamie Guyon in Public Works has been here with for twenty-five years. Our good uh Deputy Chief Ryan Irving has been here twenty-three years. Uh Officer Tim Walker's at twenty-three years as well, and rounding up the top four is Mike Farrell, seventeen years.
Wow, that's great. Thank you.
That's the end of my report.
Okay, any questions for H R I T? You did I T also, right? Yeah, okay, cool. All right. All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to Police Department Report with Chief Jolly. Chief Jolly, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Your report from the Police Department is contained in your packet. I would just point out one. Item in which uh Officer Brady Pettit. Applied for and received a four thousand dollar grant from the Tulalip Tribe. This is the second grant. We've received from them. They're excellent partners in funding some of our uh needs that uh. Were able to get in addition to the funding we received from the city. This particular one went for um float bags to be able to facilitate. Uh rescues on the river or other bodies of water where we can reach out to somebody uh who's struggling in the water, so. It's very welcome. We appreciate their. Their uh support. If there's any questions, I am available, and I'll pick that to councilmember Scarborough, so.
Any any questions specific to the report that was just provided by Chief Jolly?
If I understood your question, councilmember Scarborough, uh there was a question regarding the amount. Of graffiti that's being seen in the city, is that correct?
Incred.
Yes, I would, I would agree that there is an increase. It is more visible. Um there's a number of things I could propose as being possible. Uh causes of that, but that would all be quite subjective. I would say we do have an increased uh amount of people who are in our city. Uh by our estimate that are unhoused, and we have less proactive time that we're available to get out and proactively. Search and be present in some of those areas that are prone to receiving graffiti. And of course, that's a staffing issue that we're working on and continue to work on, but graffiti in and of itself is extremely difficult. Crime to catch in progress. We have had some success and had made, have made some arrests recently from some people. However, the consequences regarding that, they're in jail one night, out the next day. Doing the same types of things that we've put them in for. So uh while we have had some success apprehending some of those people. And have done our job and process them through the system, uh the accountability piece. Uh is in many of these livability issues and property crimes is absent. In my opinion.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Do you feel that the graffiti is related to the homelessness or the gang?
Right. Anecdotally, I would have to say the former um. A- as well as youth, uh but not necessarily tied to any kind of organization, gang, or uh anything of that nature that would be. Connected to a larger criminal enterprise, one-offs and things like that. One thing that we've discussed uh with. Director Bailey, we're working closely with the code enforcement component of that organization of their department. As well as uh Director. Um Roberts and I have had a quick passing conversation regarding a remediation program that. Maybe may take some of the heat off of our citizenry or residents or homeowners, property owners, I guess would be a better word. And possibly facilitate that through a volunteer program, which we have just restarted our volunteer program with the Police Department.
Um councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
So when these people are caught, they go to jail for a night. Do they go before the judge? The judge has the opportunity to give them public service, community service?
Now, that'd be a question for the court and what's available to them in municipal court. Um uh there's many options. The newly found. Founded Community Court would possibly be an o- option. Um if there was homelessness and or drug, mental health. Um issues. That's another thing to uh and we're just kind of inventing the wheel here and starting. We have several key components within our various departments. Um we have a social worker at the court, a probation officer at the court. We have community outreach at the Police Department. We have code uh over a building. We're getting better at trying to use that synergy and get together and share information and be able to tackle some of these things, but it's pretty new. Uh I believe once we get the machine humming really well, I think we'll be a lot more effective in combating some of these. Property crimes, such as graffiti.
Please don't, please don't think that I'm I'm saying you're not doing your job. That's not my intent. My intent is. People do this, there seems to be no consequence for it, so it's you get them, you let them go, and they go do it again tomorrow. So if there's no consequence, we have a different problem. It's not, it's not the Police Department's enforcement of. So don't think I'm I'm ragging on the Police Department, because I know you're doing the best you can with what you've got.
Now, a- and I understand, and your your frustration or your concern, because it frustrates me also. And it's something I'm very concerned with, that I'm concerned if there's not a fix for the Blake gap in our drug laws, that this type of thing will compound. Um and that's a very real concern and a very real threat, so. Uh if we can't tackle the little things, they they'll just blossom into larger, bigger problems. And be, it'll impact the livability in a negative way.
Okay, so councilmembers, um if you'd like more information on this, we could certainly bring this to uh back for a study session, or I could have uh the chief work with um. Um with Director Bailey to provide some additional information. Um it sounds like you brought up some really good questions. Uh councilmember Scarborough, that maybe we can get some responses on since we don't have all the parties here. Um councilmembers, okay with us having some information sent, or do you want us to go to committee, or what are your thoughts? Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
No, I'd love to see it come back. I think there it'd be a good discussion and would really like, I mean, yeah, to me, it makes sense. They should fix or clean up what they uh put graffiti on, so talking about stuff like that would be great. What what levers do we have? Would love to have everybody in the room.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll we'll set something up for a a study session and have some information brought forward, because there is a. Uh quite an integrated, multi-departmental um approach related to these issues, and I think it would be good not to. Just have one of our directors answer to it, but probably have. Um code enforcement, human services, and uh and so on, speak to it. Director Hassert, did you have something? Okay, sounds good. Um anything further from the council? Anything further, chief? Okay. Do you need anything else from me? Okay, great. Uh Public Works Department Report and Jaka, go ahead. Oh, Jordan.
Yep.
Thank you. Jordan, can you hit your light? Because I think you're Ben Worthen tonight. Hit my light. Yep, you're you're Ben. Oh, yes, I am. I'm on the spot. Ben, meet meet Deborah. Deborah, Ben, go ahead.
He hasn't been called.
Okay, go ahead, Jordan.
Okay, thank you. Um your report is in your packet. Um I asked the clerk to put it up on the screen as well, which he's got already. Uh we've got some conceptual pictures, and here's all kind of give you an idea of what we've been looking at, so they're. I think they're fun, and it's nice to have some visuals. Um so as as I mentioned, these are conceptual. Um the next phase, we'll be working on construction plans where we'll have some more specifics. Um but we've been over the last couple of months looking at exterior in in interior concepts. Um and as as well as the floor plan is completed, we'll look at that in a minute. Um but as far as far as for the exterior, um we're looking at a at a classic style, exposed wood, natural light. And um just increased parking spaces and and native landscape. So that that shot right there, um again, conceptual, but gives gives an aerial view. Um also talking about interior, um locally themed architecture style features. Um we kind of have this this phrase of bringing the outside in. Um so with all of that, a Pacific Northwest style is is where this where this is headed. Um and I think, go ahead, switch sides. Thank you. Um this next picture shows a conceptual view of the council chambers. Um if you were behind you, looking forward here, you'd have large windows, um lots of natural lighting. But also lessening the view from the outside through opaque glass and and different window treatments yet to be decided. Um on the outside, there'll be paths that um lead around the campus and to various um. Just just points and entrances and over to the Fike Bowl site. Next slide. Okay, this one here, um it's nature and light throughout. So again, natural wood exposing on the exteriors and interiors of the building. Um again, bringing that outside indoors concept. Um and as seen before, on the a couple of slides back, we saw the the wood beams on the council chambers. Um this meeting room, conference room inside sort of reflects that, um mirrors that same type of style and bringing it inside. Um and and um also, we have some planters here um that will be found in various locations throughout the building. And these are used to help with noise control, and they're also aesthetically. And these are used to help with noise control and they're also aesthetically pleasing to staff and guests. Next slide. Okay, thank you. This picture gives a depiction of the city hall lobby. And you can see things like the customer service area, the waiting area. It's a large entrance. And up if towards the back there, you can see people walking into where the staff would enter and beyond that would be public restrooms. Again, just some highlights here, customer service desk with, with glass. And then in the back, there's some push pull acoustic ceiling tiles. So those are conceptual. Nothing specific yet. And next slide, please. This is our completed floor plan. A couple of things on the top here. Optional entrances to the council chambers. So you know, we're used to coming into the, the lobby of city hall. But here we're showing a, another option possibly for an outside entrance that would also lead to different pathways and out to our flagpole area. Inside there from the entrance to city hall, the administration wing. That, that arrow right below there kind of shows the customer service window again. So you can see the city hall lobby. And then down below our justice wing, which would be down at the court entrance. So it's just showing the two main entrances to our building. And last slide, please. This, two pictures of the parking lot. So the one on the top is our west parking lot design. Again, conceptual landscape. The one below is, is a east parking lot design. And as you can see, both of them have lots of landscape and just reiterating that is a lot of that will be native vegetation and materials. Overall, parking count will increase, police parking increases and drive lanes. You know, wide drive lanes for emergency vehicles access and egress. So again, using a lot of landscape, native landscape, Pacific Northwest style with the architecture, interior and exteriors. And just promote, promoting, bringing the outside in. Yeah, that's, that's where we're at for now. We're on schedule. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to take those. But that concludes the information for this evening.
All right. Thank you very much for all the work on this. And I appreciate the, the work that all the staff members have been doing as well as yourself and and the architects or the consultants we're working with. I, I like a lot of the stuff I'm seeing. Turning to the council, council members, you have any questions or comments or concerns about the material that you've seen? Go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, yeah, thanks, Jordan. This looks great. I see the, you mentioned the optional entrance to council chambers from outside. I just was curious what, what brought up, like why there would be an entrance to the outside there?
Yeah, just, just something different, I guess. You know, we have a lot of different hardscapes where with pathways going around the building. And one of those is right, right there in, you know, summertime, you know, sometimes if there's meetings in here or breaks, just having the outside entrance and having, so if staff were in the council chambers, just having meetings and stuff, just having, being able to go inside and outside without having to go into a lobby. You know, where maybe there's customer services occurring or other, other things, you know, just, just another option, I suppose.
Councilmember Hanford, that was one of the things that I had asked staff to look at so that at one point in time, we had what was going to be a sort of a roll up glass door on this side of the building that this wall's going to be pushed out. With the idea that if we ever wanted to hold in, I love this line here, everybody keeps moving. I, it, it would have allowed us to have an indoor outdoor space that we've had an event in here. Because it's not just going to be about council meetings that you could move out onto a, a deck out here like a patio. Because of the way that we're doing the windows, which I agree with. Now we have one point of, additional point of ingress and address, which is going to be, you know, pretty much over there in that corner. What I like about that, and again, if the council feels differently, that's fine. What I like about that is just like Jordan pointed out, it gives you another means of ingress and egress so that if you have an after hours event and you're, you've shut off these doors right here into the lobby, that you still have this point of ingress and egress that somebody can come in and out. You'll notice also that there's a kitchenette, which is right over against that wall right there, like a, not a kitchenette, what do we call it? There's a kitchenette, right? Yeah. So you think about a sink and stuff like that. So that again, if somebody wanted to lease the space or if we were doing something to honor the planning commission, you know, parks board members, volunteers. You could shut that door off, not worry about the security out there and people could come in and out. So that, that was the idea, an additional door. Who knows? Maybe this time of day, maybe that's the way we want people to come in and out. The only difference is that you've got the restrooms out there. So but we also have restrooms will be back there too. So as you can see right there, there's a door leading through that brick, currently a brick wall there so that in a, in the middle of a council meeting, if you need to use a restroom, the council members will be able to go out that door right there. And then we're going to have the audio in the restrooms. You can hear what's going on in the council meeting while you're in the restrooms. You don't miss something. So we're thinking about things like that as well as an executive session room back through there as well. So you've got three ways to get in and out of this, of this, of these chambers here with this work done. That probably gives you more answers and maybe more questions, but I just wanted to share.
No, I, I really appreciate it. That, that helps. That I, I see the benefits of all that. The only concern I was thinking of just off, off was it's nice just having one door when we're having a meeting and not being like distracted by multiple doors opening, people coming and going out of different doors.
Yeah.
As well as, excuse me, there's no glass. So there could be an army standing outside chanting and, and holding pitchforks. And we wouldn't be distracted by them because we're focusing on our business.
So.
Whereas from what I saw, some of those pictures, it looks like some of the glass is frosted, but not all of it. And so just concerned that way. I know we're still in the baby stages, but I thought I should bring those up now.
Yep. We've talked about having opaque or semi opaque blinds that you can pull up and down and things like that. So
Sure.
Yeah, we, we've talked about things like that. And then certainly having a door right there. You know, it can be locked during council meetings or something like that if you want to control access, but we can certainly remove the door if that's council's interest or we can keep the door in and just understand it's going to be locked and we can have blind so we can pull down if need be.
Yeah, I'm not saying remove the door. I'm just saying that I'd like, we're going to add it. Let's at least have the ability to close shades, lock it, do whatever we need to do just for security and being able to focus, you know?
It could also because.
Jordan, let me turn on your mic so that oh, you're still on. Okay, never mind. Tammy and Kirk, go ahead.
Okay. I was going to say also, it could be code just because of the increase in square footage and max capacity that we were required to have that extra, extra door there. But I, but I agree. You know, that's something that could be locked during council meetings. Or, you know, once it starts, you shut the door and you lock it. There, there's lots of options in, in the opaque glass. They've seen the picture. I just want to keep reminding everybody, these are conceptual drawings and nothing specific yet. So I hear the comments and we'll consider all that as we get into specifics for the details on the windows and being able to see in and out.
Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
This was really interesting to finally see something. So my question also is about the windows and just energy efficiency. Heat, all of that, when I see that much glass, I was just wondering if, you know, I know we're in the beginning stages, but are we paying attention to things like that? You know, just energy efficient. I know that's not a lead building, I'm sure, but it would be nice to have that information as we progress. What's being done to, to make sure that we're operating as, as efficiently as we can, that the design is including that. So again, I love it, but I'm thinking those windows. Wow. A lot of heat is going to go through those windows, out those windows, out that glass.
I have a meeting with the architects tomorrow, so I can bring that up. And they've been really good as, you know, as taking those considerations. So I'll just bring your questions up and see what kind of answers I get from them and bring.
Thank you.
And I'd like to make clear, one of the interests in the, in the windows there so that you feel a connection to the outside. And so that members of the public can see that you are working on behalf of the community. So while there are concerns about security and distractions and, you know, freedom of speech with people holding up signs outside, which they could be doing inside a meeting also. We have talked about issues of security and things like that. And also if you've got screens up and, you know, wanting to have darkness or something like that, but the, the intent of the windows was to show that transparency and echo that transparency. And so that while you're sitting here, you can see the trees outside and it's not like you're just sitting here in a cave. So those are some of the thoughts. And obviously the energy efficiency is, you know, really important as well, but just so that you can understand sort of the vision that, that we were talking about on, you know, on the staff level of what we're trying to achieve is that, that literal transparency and being able to have something that allows you to, to see outside and trees in the community while you're working. Go ahead, Jacob. You will be, go.
Councilmember Kenny, thank you for your questions and comments. Just to kind of piggyback on what Jordan was saying. The building actually is designed to a LEED silver certification level. However, LEED silver certification costs anywhere between a hundred and fifty and $200,000. So as a, at a staff level and at the mayor's direction, we decided to not pursue the formal certification, but to, to meet that standard. So energy efficiency and Washington Energy Code is very strict throughout. So those windows certainly fit into that. Some of them might even be triple glazed at that size. And then the other thing I wanted to kind of add on to that is the mayor and the real administrator night have requested that we make appropriations requests to our House representatives, which we've done. Ask, actually, and our, our Senate Senator as well, asking for 1.1 million dollars for this structure. If we are awarded that through the Department of Commerce, we will unfortunately have to go through the LEED certification. So we kind of programmed in that extra money there, but well, so we're designing to that. And if we get the money, great, we're just going to have to jump through that, that extra hoop. Thank you, Mayor.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Right. And Councilmember Kenny, anything else?
Nope. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I would question. Chief Jolly might understand why I say that. I was, I need to know if there was thought process in a door behind the diocese into that brown area as an emergency exit as an active shooter would be coming probably through the front door. And we would have nowhere to go but out the front door, or maybe you could make it to the side door.
Councilmember Scarborough, I can answer that question. So you see where the, the arrow is on the screen? That's this corner right over here. So everybody will have a, everybody will have a third way to get in and out where you can go through that door and then you'll be able to turn right and go up on the screen. You take the arrow up and then to the left. And that's where you're in the administrative section. So you can see there are cubicles there and then there's a restroom and executive session room. And then, and then you're able to get out of the building by turning left one more time and going out one of those two doors at the to the left on the screen along that west wall.
Well, I see you have, you have an access out. I first, I would personally rather see it closer to the middle. Then on one end of the.
Yep. We put it there because putting it in the middle, we thought would be too much of a distraction. That would be right at the middle of the diocese. And during a meeting, having people going in and out of the middle. We felt that that would be a distraction off to the side, allows people to come and go without creating a distraction in the middle of the diocese during a meeting.
And then having to go to the restroom.
Yeah, because that's primarily why you're going to be using it. Also staff, you think about clerk staff or anybody else, department staff going in and out of that door into that back area. So that, that's why it was tucked off into the corner. Okay. Does staff?
Change seats with you, Kirk. You can be closer.
Yeah. The, does staff any, have any other additions to what I just said or corrections or clarifications?
No, no.
All right. Councilmembers, do you have any other, do you have any other questions about this? I, I really appreciate the conversation around this. So thank you. This is something that I know I was working on in 2003 when I was a council member and they were working on before then. This is, this is something that we really need. And I appreciate our state legislators for being willing to help out. The contribution they'd be making would be to the justice wing. And what, what they're looking at that, at qualifying for that in part is the, the community court that we have. So the justice wing is that new section that would be built, connecting the administrative building where we are right now to the police department building, where the new entrance is going to be. So it would be building out that area and back is, is kind of what, what we're looking at that for qualifying for. All right. Any other questions? Jordan, did I get everything? All right. Let's see what we have now. We have city administrator report. So I will turn to Ben Worthen tonight. So Ben, Director Worthen, go ahead and hit your, I'll get it. Go.
I don't have a report tonight for the city administrator.
Do you have? It's a lot of work to say.
We do have an extended agenda that I'm going to defer my time to City Clerk Wykoff to discuss.
Okay. So we're going to look at the extended agenda. Got it. All right. Clerk Wykoff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking forward, just a reminder that we have a special meeting next Tuesday to discuss the 2024-2044 comprehensive plan update. That should be listed as new business, not unfinished business. But that will be your special meeting starts at seven o'clock. And on the seventh, we currently don't have anything on the public safety committee meeting rather, other than adopting minutes and electing a chair. So it's possible that that meeting will get canceled if I do not get anything from staff on that. And then we have our regular study session on the seventh as well, where we will discuss the John Landy will provide a report update for treatment plant engineering. And there is a joint meeting with the planning commission on the seventh to discuss the comprehensive plan kickoff. That is all for the next two meetings.
All right. Councilmembers, just checking schedules, is anybody expecting to miss anything between now and the end of February or so?
Yes, this is Fisher. I will be missing the 31st.
January 31st. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Gamble?
I was just going to say, I think, wasn't there with the, there was a meeting in February where a lot of us were going to be lobbying and we were potentially going to cancel?
Yeah, I was going to come back to that. Yeah. So we'll come back to that after we get this one done. Any other council members anticipating being absent? Okay. And then Clerk Wykoff, do we need a motion to cancel the 14th of Council's own plan?
Next slide, please. So I already reminded you about the meeting next Tuesday. So as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, there is a potential for no quorum on the 14th because we have, that I know of, at least three council members that will be absent as well as the mayor and city administrator Knight. And a few of our directors. So if council chooses to do so, they can move to cancel the February 14th Legislative Affairs Committee and council meetings.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Gamble, did you want to cancel Valentine's Day council meeting?
I'm, I'm going to move to cancel February 14th, 2023. Council Legislative Affairs Committee meeting and the city council meeting, as be that most of, a lot of the council members will be down in Olympia.
I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember Hanford to cancel the February 14th, 2023 council meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Okay. And then just so folks are aware, I will not be here, January 31st, I will be visiting family out of state. And so Councilmember Davis, you, you'll be pro temping the meeting, I understand. So cool. Thank you. All right. And then I've got my updates Monroe this week. I know that we had a couple of weeks go by. I was down in Olympia with the Association of Washington Cities. I waited for two hours to give testimony in the House Transportation Commission, the committee about the, the governor's proposed transportation budget. A number of projects around the state of Washington had their, their funding timelines pushed back. As you're all aware with capital facilities plans, they are like six year plans, the transportation budget I, is, is longer than that. And what little funding we had for five two two. What little funding we had for five two two that I am thankful was added last year to the, to a future year in the budget. Uh, has been moved out, um, to a future, future year. And that is not uncommon with a number of projects around the state, so. Um. Unfortunately, we and a bunch of other cities and counties are in defense. Trying just to get money back into the budget in years. That are closer to, if not the same years that the legislative body, that the state legislature approved last year, um. But, um, I went to get test- testimony, um, unfortunately, I, there was at least an hour where somebody gave a presentation. Um, on Thursday night, um, I then was able to remote in the following week to give testimony. Uh, to the house and had, uh, sixty seconds to deliver that. And it just expressed how important it is for us to have five two two finished. I also met with, uh, Governor Inslee on Friday, that particular week, we talked about affordable housing. We talked about, um. Uh, affordable housing, we talked about the Blake decision, we talked about public safety and we talked about chemical dependency. Um, as part of affordable housing, I talked to him about. About how it's important for us as cities that are not part of the contiguous UGA that we're able to annex territory more easily than we can today. And, uh, about my frustrations that the county, uh, zones, the urban growth area adjacent to our city at. Higher densities and then they get developed at those higher densities, but not high enough densities. Um, and then they expect us to annex the territory and how those are lost opportunities for us to. Maybe have higher densities where there is more land rather than relying just on infill. Um, and we talked about some of the other things we've used here in, in Monroe to get the missing middle housing. Uh, that I appreciate councils, uh, concurrence and leadership in, uh, like making adjustments to impact fees and things like that for. Uh, for higher density housing and also not having, um. Fees or reduced fees, uh, for development in our downtown, so. Um, anyway, just a lot going on with the legislature, please take a look at your emails, we, uh, did get a summary of a couple of items on Sunday. Um, I think we'll be getting those going forward and if you ever have any questions about. What's going on the legislature, please reach out to me and to Administrator Knight. We'll be happy to follow up with our government affairs officials if we need to. And, um, you've got my phone number, feel free to give me a call if you like, uh, does anybody have any questions for me? All right, seeing none, uh, we do have a need for an executive session this evening, uh, we have litigation person to R C W forty two point thirty. Point one ten subsection one subsection little I. We'll do this for an initial ten minutes, uh, there will be action to follow if nothing else to adjourn, so. Um, I will announce extensions if necessary, those extensions will be announced online and also in the lobby. Um, and then when we are done, again, we will re- uh, return to this meeting, so we are now. We are now on, uh, in executive session beginning at eight fifty two P M. Here's objection, we are adjourned. We are adjourned, have a great rest of your week.